You're on.
Okay, good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, June 5th at 9:00 AM. Doc, would you lead us to the political allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have Juliana Krebs today from Eastside Church with the morning prayer.
I don't know, I'm pretty loud. Good morning. Thank you for inviting me here this morning. I'm Juliana. I'm one of the pastors at Eastside Church. And this morning, when I was getting ready for this prayer time, I wanted to just to pick out a couple of verses from the Bible, and Psalms is always a good one because it's written, a lot of them by King David, and this particular one is could be used as a song or a poem. But in Psalms 15, it talks about how we need to act and treat each other. And I'm just going to read the first two verses and then I'll go right into prayer. Lord, who can dwell in your tent? Who can live on your holy mountain? The one who lives blamelessly, practices righteousness, and acknowledges the truth in his heart. Would you pray with me? Dear Heavenly Father, we stand before you, knowing you're in the midst of this, the conversations that are going to be happening today. And we ask, Lord, that you would open up each one of our hearts so that we can stand in that blamelessness and practice your truths, Lord, and acknowledge your truth in each one of our hearts. So that whatever's being spoken today through all of these meetings and this together in this place, that it will be shown with your justice, your truth, and your light, Lord. And I ask that for all of these ones here, that you will give them the wisdom and the knowledge and the revelation of you, Jesus, so that every heart in this room will feel your presence, but also know that justice is being done because you're in the midst. And we ask this in your name, Jesus. Amen.
All right. Any questions on the consent agenda?
No.
All right, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Uh, Jackie, Christina? Courtney?
Do we need to delay maybe?
Uh-oh.
Good morning. Courtney's supposed to be here to present the credit process that they were developing for customers who get missed service pickups and to go over the 8% rate increase, but she's not here. So I don't know if you want to delay.
How about I make a motion that we put this down in the agenda, item 15. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. You okay with that? Will you second that, Brian?
Second then.
Okay.
Seth, are you trying to call?
Yeah, I'm gonna try and call her.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, on to Brad.
Good morning, Commissioners. Record on Brad Haynes, Crete County Road Department. I'm here today to ask for signatures for the Barnes Road Overlay Project contract to the lowest responsible bidder of High Desert Aggregate for $449,550. Not to start until after July 1.
Thank you.
I guess there's no questions?
No, there are any questions.
So Commissioner, this was, sorry, for the record, this was an invitation to bid, so I would recommend a motion to award the Barnes Road Overlay Project to High Desert Aggregate for that $449,550 and for the county, for the board to sign out of court following the protest period. So we have to give them the seven days for someone to challenge it, so.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Got another one, huh?
I do. Another one. Procaro, Pogero Chip Seal Amendment. Uh, this is to amend the chip seal rock delivery to trucking only due to equipment malfunction. John has the particulars on that, I do believe.
Sure. So we, uh, this was another procurement that we did a little while ago. We went through the whole process. Pogero was the lowest responsive bidder. We got all their paperwork, all their insurance certs, everything with the bonds, everything we needed. The day after they signed the contract, I think that's when the rock crusher broke, uh, and so they couldn't fulfill the contract. It was on a short time scale. Understanding was the road department has rocks, but we just didn't have them where we needed them. And so we worked out a compromise with, um, Pogero, where they're, they're basically going to ship the same amount of rock, but then just it's, it's our rock they're moving instead of their crushing their rock and moving it for us. So it's a simple amendment to make sure we get what we need in the right amount of time.
Is there a financial? I mean, it says for the delivery, rock 165 per driver with a cap of 1050 per ton.
So it's going to cost us a lot less than it did before. We don't have to pay, we're not paying for the crushing.
Okay.
We're just paying for the, the delivery. So it's, it's going to save us money.
Okay. Okay.
Right. Sounds good to me.
Okay. This one we can just approve with a regular motion.
Okay, make a motion to approve the amendment for the rock crushing, rumor rock and stone company LLC.
Can I second that?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aaron?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Aaron Boyce, uh, Crete County Sheriff's Office Lieutenant over the Probation Division. Um, I'm here this morning to ask for signatures on a amendment, a one-page amendment to an IGA 6527, which is our grant aid. Um, this is in light of House Bill 5204, which provided additional funding, funding to community corrections. So this one-page then, um, just authorizes us to accept our additional $136,000 that the state has granted to the community corrections divisions. Happy to answer any questions?
No, sounds good.
I'm all for money. I make a motion to approve amendment to IGA 6527 for additional funding from HB 5204 in the amount of $136,672.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Derek?
Commissioners, what you have in front of you is the written minutes and the recommendations from the elected official compensation committee. They met in mid to late May. They had a two-hour discussion about what to recommend for elected official compensation. As you know, under law, the county is required to compose a committee of responsible individuals to make a recommendation as to the compensation for certain county, um, positions. By practice, the county also includes the district attorney's office among the purview of the compensation committee. And the county supplements the DA's compensation, um, beyond what the state pays for that role. The recommendation, or I should say recommendations, is broken up by position. My recommend, my request is that the Board of Commissioners receive these recommendations. You are not required to follow the recommendations. And in the past, the county has decided in some instances to follow the recommendations, sometimes to reject the recommendations and sometimes to pick and choose among the different recommendations. So I don't think that there's any particular action item that's before you, but I did ask that it be included on the agenda so that both you and the general public know what it is that the committee recommended. Thank you.
Right. Well, I entertain a motion.
So, so you said there's no action. What do you mean by, I mean, it seems like we need to approve this or?
You don't have to, no.
Oh.
So what has typically happened is that the committee will make their recommendation. By practice, the committee has also tended to send that recommendation to the budget committee. That may not necessarily be required by law, but that's what they have done in the past. But no, you don't have to make any sort of motion today. I mean, you could, but you do have, um, as later agenda items, considerations of, uh, different budgets. So I don't think that you need to make a motion today. And if you don't, you've already met your requirement because you have received and reviewed what those recommendations from the compensation committee have been.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right.
I would like to say something, though. I appreciate them, Compensation Committee, and all the work that they did. But while reviewing it, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't mind taking a little less money and being in that 55% tile as the rest of the elected officials are versus the 60%. So I just wanted to be known for the record that I would be happy and fine to be in the same position as the rest of them.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no problem with that either. Again, I, I was the one that wanted a Compensation Committee. So however it works out and however the budget committee feels, it's fine with me. I'm good. So we need to take note, though, of Brian's comment. Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak to this? Nobody. Okay.
All right. Jamie? So you're saying that we, do we need to approve it? So then I do entertain a motion.
So we're, so we need to make a motion on what was presented?
I don't think you need to make a motion. If we'd like it to be the budget committee, and then the budget committee can come back to do the comments, then Eric would not need a motion.
Yeah, I don't think that you need a motion, just to say, the Board of Commissioners would like to hear what the whole budget committee has to say about these recommendations. I don't think you need a motion for that. I mean, you could, you could just decide that, um, you would like to get that perspective. And then we would reach out to all the budget committee members. Of course, you three are part of the budget committee. Whether then the budget committee would like to schedule a public meeting at which they review this and deliberate upon it, I suppose that will be up for them.
I would like the budget committee to review it because I think it's very important. It's part of our, so I would, I would like them to review. Yes. Christina?
I, I'm fine with it.
And I would make a motion to, to have the budget committee review, see how that fits into our total fiscal picture.
Want to make sure that the, the, I'm happy to see if we can get a budget committee together on that.
You know?
Can we?
We put in that Seth's salary was going to stay the same until January 1st. Can Brian and I just make a motion that ours stays the same till then? And then that gives us plenty of time in that regard? Or are you talking about the other elected officials also? I, I am, I'm.
I think it's the entire slate that needs to be taken care of.
Okay.
And I think we've already had public input and a board go over it. And I'm fine with more input, but I think we've had quite a bit of input.
The biggest thing is, do we have the money?
And I don't, I'm not asking for more input. I'm just advising that I would be fine at 50. And if, as the other elected officials are, I mean, we can do nothing and stay at 60. But if anybody else feels that we should be equal to the other elected officials, then we can change it to 55.
Yeah, and that's fine with me.
Well, I mean, again, I think we should just stick with what the budget committee decided. I mean, I think that's what we had a conversation about, about this whole process, was giving it the opportunity for the budget committee to decide and then move it forward with whatever their decision was. I mean, that's what we talked about in every previous meeting.
That's fine. I'm just putting it out there.
Well, you can make a motion right now if you want to.
I think I've already made a motion.
Oh, okay.
What the budget committee, well, I'm making a motion now then to put, what the budget committee put forward.
Okay. Then I'll second the motion because we did a committee, we appointed these people, and we were going on their advice. So I will second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me.
I think you might be passing it down the line here, Susie.
I, I'm supposed to be medicated, so hopefully no. Yeah, yeah, why don't we?
I don't know. I think we should punish her and make her wait till the very end of the meeting. I'm totally joking.
Courtney, I'm not that mean. You can come up here.
Sorry, you guys don't, I was like looking at the agenda, thinking I had plenty of time outside, taking selfies in front of the mural.
I have a granddaughter graduation today, so I told him we had to speed it up.
All right. Well, then I will talk fast. So, uh, my name's Courtney Boss. I'm the Municipal Manager for Public Services in Central Oregon. Here today seeking an 8% increase in garbage rates and I'm here to answer questions about our credits for missed service program. The slides that were, sorry. The slides that we provided to you reflected our original ask of 10%, but we understand that the commission is evaluating an 8% increase to rates for support. I've submitted an updated 2024 projection that reflects the 8% increase for the county's records. Do you want me to provide a detailed, um, do you want me to talk through the financials or are you? I can. In 2023, collection.
Christina, what do you, what do you think?
If you feel like.
This, this is very similar to what you presented us before, except now instead of a 10% increase, it's been, I just cut back 2%.
Correct.
I'm fine with it. I don't know how.
I'm fine with it, too.
Okay, yeah.
I, I've been working with Christina and Jackie, so I'm.
So I don't think you need to. I, I can adjust 2% in my head.
Okay. Um, I'll just say that, uh, in 2024, with our new projections at 8%, we're anticipating a net income of $255,155 with a margin of 8.42%. So, um, if there are any questions that come up after the meeting or any follow-up that's needed, just let me know. And I'll jump right into the, um, kind of conversation about the credit program because I think there were questions about that. So, um, the Commissioners, uh, raised, I think, what was a very valid point about, um, kind of the challenges that we've had with service over the past couple of years and wanting to make sure that customers, um, are appropriately compensated when we're not doing our jobs the way that we need to. So we created a credit program and implemented that. And I can talk through, um, I don't know if there's an actual PowerPoint slides, but I'll just, uh, yeah, so do you scroll down? Not that one, but the next one?
Next one.
Credit text. Okay. Um, so what we ultimately decided to do is, um, originally I thought we were going to take kind of a one-size-fits-all approach where we would just have a standard credit amount, and if we missed you, you would get a couple bucks off your bill. What we quickly realized was that every situation is kind of unique. And when a customer has a particularly bad experience, they need to be compensated at a much higher level than somebody who's missed only like one time. So ultimately, we've kind of mapped out this, uh, process and we've created a that our agents can use to, um, basically input different scenarios so that people can receive credit values that match their experience. So generally speaking, if somebody is missed and it's the first time that they're missed, they call us, we will either go back and get it within 24 hours or we will give them a credit. And, uh, that credit is for the county customers. It usually ends up being around four bucks. So it just, it, and it kind of depends on the customer's accounts, um, how big their container is, all of those things. If they say to us, we don't want you to come back and get it, just skip me this week, um, we'll automatically apply the credit for that. If it's a customer that calls us and says, you know what, you guys have dropped the ball over and over and over again. What is the deal? The agent will look at the account history and they'll apply credits based on that overall experience. And we'll go back and collect what was missed within 24 hours. So when you start to input that into the calculator, the total value of that could be up to a month or more of credit value.
Is it then four times $4 a time? Like if I missed four times, it's four times four?
It depends on your service type.
Okay.
That's just kind of an average of what it ends up being for the county customers. If we roll over a route, now I haven't had a chance to test this since we've implemented this program, but, um, I don't know if you, well, you probably remember last summer. Last summer, we were rolling over routes because we didn't have enough drivers to complete them. So we wouldn't finish a route on a service day and we would move it to the next service day. If that happens now, we're going to go into the system and we're going to proactively credit those customers for that missed service. That hasn't happened since we've implemented this, so I haven't had a chance to test out to see how it works. And I'm hoping that it never happens so that I never have to test it out. But we do have that built into the system so that, um, customers would be credited for that if, if we weren't servicing them on the right service day if we couldn't, because we didn't have drivers. Um, so those are kind of the, the types of situations. Customers can get a credit if they call us and they report a miss on their service day or within about 24 hours. If they call us, um, a couple of days later and they, um, are just reporting a really bad experience overall with the company, the agent can make a judgment call or escalate it to the local team, and then that will get to me or to Cheyenne or to one of our local agents here. And we'll look at that and make sure that the customer is taking. The approach is just, um, the customer is always going to be right in Crete County and Prineville. And, um, if they're telling us that they have a bad experience, we're going to give them the credits and, and make sure that they feel good about the service that we're providing. In terms of the value, like I said, it just really kind of varies based on if it's a commercial customer, a residential customer, et cetera. So, um, the total value would depend. And I can produce, um, reports every single month on like how much we're crediting and to whom, um, if that's something that you're interested in. Um, but we do have that functionality, too. Questions about that?
I don't think we need to know about whom, but I think it would be nice to know how many issues are coming up and how many people are being compensated for it.
Okay.
The store is temporarily closed in Palina, so we don't have our little gossip hub. But about three weeks ago, there was a funeral at the hall and I went and I was told that the garbage service in Palina had greatly gotten way better and that you were actually going to think about adding recycling. So I definitely thank you for that.
Thank you. Yeah, we are trying hard, um, to, to do a really good job here. So, um, we're going to keep plugging away at it and anything that you bring to me, we're going to do. And, uh, like I said, the customer, the customers are going to be, um, treated the way that they deserve to be treated here, which is, uh, like royalty.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
We really appreciate you.
And it wouldn't hurt maybe to just do a quarterly report or something just to see, and then that keeps us kind of all in tune.
Yep.
I agree. I don't think you have to do every month, but quarterly or six months or something.
I, um, I'll work with Jackie on kind of a cadence for that. The other thing I would just say or ask, I guess, of, of you, and I'll just state this for the record publicly, um, typically these types of programs are mandated through a franchise agreement or are documented in some way so that they're not tied to a staff person that works for a company. So right now, that's, this is something that I've created. I think it's probably in the best interest of the county for us to have either an MOU or to add this to the agreement so that in the event that I move to like Fiji, um, y'all still have the program.
We'd be working remote from there.
You're not allowed to go to Fiji, particularly in the winter.
Yeah. Well, well, uh, I think maybe I can work with Jackie on getting that.
Yeah, I would, I would really appreciate that.
Embedded, just in case.
Thank you very much, Courtney.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Go finish myself.
Okay, so do we need a motion to approve the 8% increase?
So, uh, one question I had, Courtney, before you leave. Under the franchise agreement, there are two ways in which the, uh, rates could be increased. One of them is if the request is to match CPI increases and the other is whether to increase beyond what CPI, uh, has reflected. Of those two, which is this particular request?
This is not.
Okay. So then what I might recommend, um, is to open a public hearing and see if there's any sort of comment for that. Um, under our franchise agreements, the expectation is that, uh, the county court has, or excuse me, the Board of Commissioners has the authority to accept or reject, um, a request that would exceed the CPI increases.
Yes, and, but I think it's also important to speak to the point that, um, we do have a kind of unwritten rule that we work with the city on where we try and keep them between eight and 12. Is that right, Jackie? And this should put them in that, that sweet spot of about 10, 10%. And so, um, yeah, I just want to make sure we brought that up before.
Yeah, so we're, um, um, our, uh, margin range target or limit in Crete County is actually 8 to 11%. So, um, this request, an 8% increase will land us between that range. But it is in excess of what CPI is currently, so it's a latter of the two options in that franchise.
Need to open it up for public comment?
Yep. Anybody have any comments on the on the rate increase?
Everyone stood up at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Public meeting closed. I'd entertain a motion.
Hey, Eric, I would like you to, because I know there's a different, you asked, so what motion should we make?
So for the, um, credit policy, I think Courtney's suggestion to memorialize that in a written document makes a great deal of sense. So I don't think there's anything to be done on that. Uh, for the rate increase, I think a motion, uh, to approve an 8% increase as presented in today's meeting, June 5th, 2024.
I was so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Yes.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you, Courtney.
All right, Commissioners, I'm gonna be here for a few minutes. We got a couple of budget things to do. So for the record, I'm Jamie Berger, Budget Analyst for Crete County. The first item that you have in front of you in your packet should be order 2024-25. This is a supplemental budget for our current fiscal year for the Crete County budget. And these are adjustments to the budget we are requesting, uh, within the allowable Oregon revised statutes. So do you have any questions? Would you like me to summarize and outline the six pages that we've kind of already outlined and described in the packet? Do you have any questions about it? What would you like from me?
I'd like to hear you just do a quick summary, Jamie.
That would be perfect.
So, um, the reason that this has gone into a supplemental budget is because there are a few funds. So um, the reason that this has gone into a supplemental budget is because there are a few funds where the change is greater than ten percent. The largest change that we are looking at doing is using capital reserve dollars to uh, help with cash flow in our capital projects fund. That, that money will move as needed. Right now, we do not need that cash, not in the immediate today. But we wanna make sure that we have, in an abundance of caution, that we have enough appropriation to finish construction in that fund in fiscal twenty-four. So that is probably the largest change. Uh, the other supplemental budgets that are there, some of them are just housekeeping corrections. We had, we had made, we had needed to make, for example, in that first page of Crooked River Watershed Fund. That is a fund that we had closed, and we had missed showing the transfer out of Crooked River Watershed into the general fund. Uh, we did it, we did it through budget process, but we actually needed to show it in the fiscal twenty-four budget that it was transferring out. So some of these supplemental changes are just a housekeeping correction. It doesn't actually change the appropriation of the general fund, which is where those closed fund dollars went. Most of the other changes are just to make sure we have enough appropriation. Um, and those would not be supplemental in nature because they do not change the spending by greater than ten percent. And so those are just, again, to make sure due to activity in different categories. Uh, we're just making sure that we have the correct amount of appropriation based on our estimates of how spending will go for this fiscal year. Does that give you enough detail, but not too much detail? I can, I can go very nitty gritty if you want more, but I think that's probably high level. That's what we're doing with this particular order.
Sounds good. All right.
Open the, the hearing?
Where are you going?
Oh, I, I'm making it possible for a public hearing.
I don't see anybody.
You got quite a few more here, so.
No, I, I, I will be doing this forever. So it does actually have a public hearing because of something.
Public hearing open. Is this what you're here for, John? Oh. Okay. Anybody on the phone? Are we, meeting closed? I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adopt the supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty-three dash twenty-four under order two oh two four dash twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, next?
Right, so the next one, uh, for order twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six. This is another supplemental budget. This is for our historical museum fund. This is purely a housekeeping budget correction. This is similar to what I described for, our Crooked River Watershed General Fund. We had closed the reserve fund through the fiscal twenty-four budget process, and again, we just need to show on paper the transfer of those resources from the fund that closed into the fund where those resources now live. So, this one is really just a housekeeping. It's supplemental because that category didn't exist for that fund, and so let me know if you have any questions.
No questions? Any uh, then we'll open the public hearing? This must be what you're here for, John? No? Do you think it'll ever stop being funny? Anybody online?
Make a motion to approve order twenty twenty-four twenty-six, adopting a supplemental budget for Cook County Historical Museum for fiscal year twenty twenty-three twenty-four.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's what Jamie, it's you again.
It is me again, okay. Uh, this is order twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven. This is almost identical to the one we just discussed. This one instead is for the Agricultural Extension Service District. Again, we had some, we had some excessive funds that we closed at the end of fiscal year twenty-three. They were part of the fiscal twenty-four budget document. Uh, again, it's just a movement showing that we transferred those resources out of reserve funds into the main operating fund. Uh, Kim, Herbert, and now Rebecca are still maintaining those reserves. We're just doing it within one fund instead of doing it in three funds. So um, this is pretty much the exact same situation. It's a housekeeping correction. And uh, it's supplemental because those categories didn't exist in those funds because we had closed them on paper, so. Any questions about this one? Okay.
Yep. Open the public hearing? John, do you wanna remove? All right, uh, we close the public hearing. Unless, anybody online?
I make a motion to approve order twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, adopting a supplemental budget for the Cook County Ag Extension Service District for fiscal year twenty-three dash twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Right, and you're gonna get tired of hearing from me. This is uh, order twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight. So this is the order to adopt the fiscal twenty twenty-five budget. We have not made any changes to what the budget committee has approved, so uh, what you see in your packet, we have listed the approved column. Those were the numbers that the budget committee had decided on. We have no adjustments to that, and so we are presenting to you to adopt the budget exactly as is approved by the committee. Um, do you have any questions about, about any of that? This also is for um categorizing the taxes and imposing them, so this order does all those pieces so that we can legally operate starting July one.
Public hearing opened? Man on the phone? Close?
Make a motion to approve order twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight, adopting Cook County budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five.
And I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Nope. The only discussion I have is what a good job I think the budget committee and Christina and Jamie have done in, in this budget, and I was very, for my first time, I was very impressed.
Very much so.
Yep, thank you.
All right.
We need to finish.
Oh, sorry, any uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we're onto the next one.
Blew the momentum.
You really did.
I'm sorry.
Order twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine. Uh, this is the Cook County Road Agency Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And again, uh, this, these numbers that are presented to you are exactly as approved by the budget committee during the process. And so uh, we have no adjustments to this adopted budget. The Cook County Road Agency does not have any taxing, any taxes, and so we are only adopting a budget. We are not categorizing or imposing any taxes for this agency.
Sounds good. Nope. Open the public hearing? Ryan, do you have something you wanna weigh in on? Um, let's see, anybody on the phone? Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
First, we're gonna close the public.
Sorry. I thought you did.
Public hearing closed.
Make a motion to approve order twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, adopting Cook County Road Agency Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Hi, oh, sorry. I got the motion made. That was all I thought I needed to know. There we go. Okay.
Okay. Close here.
All right, this is my last one today.
Oh, yeah.
Order twenty twenty-four dash thirty. So this is the order to adopt the budget for the Cook County Historical Museum Fund. Again, the budget committee met and discussed the budget. They have approved these numbers. We have no adjustments to those, and so we are um, requesting that you would adopt the budget for the Cook County Museum. They do have a local option levy, so there is also that element of imposing these categorized taxes. Have any questions about this?
Oh.
Okay.
Must be here for this one, John. Oh. All right, uh, anybody on the phone? Close?
Ryan's turn.
Well, I make a motion to adopt order twenty twenty-four dash thirty, adopting Cook County Historical Museum Fund budget for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. Twenty twenty-five.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Got it first.
Thank you very much.
Morning commissioners, Christina Herron, finance director for the record. Thanks for hanging in there through all of these. Um, the final one we have is order twenty twenty-four thirty-one. And that is ordering the fees to be collected for the county for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five beginning July first of twenty twenty-four for performing services and establishing a uniform fee schedule for the county. And this is under O R S two ninety-four, one sixty. Happy to answer any questions that you have. In your packet, you have a highlighted version that shows all of the changes from last year's fee schedule to this year's fee schedule, and then you'll have the final exhibit that will be included as the fee schedule behind the order.
Good. This is stuff we've already gone over with Will and.
But don't we need to do public?
Yeah, no.
Okay. Okay.
Confirming. Public hearing? No, John?
John's quiet today.
Anybody on the line? Hey, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve order twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one, ordering the fees to be collected by Cook County for fiscal year twenty-four dash twenty-five with the attached exhibit A as the fee schedule to be adopted in the order. And exhibit B is an informational and included to show markups and changes to fees over the prior fee schedule.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye. Okay, and then Jamie, don't leave.
Yeah, let's see, guys, come on up.
Can't leave. We just wanted to, as far as the commissioners in Cook County, we want to thank you for your hard work on behalf of our county. I'm gonna probably fumble this. Oh, thank you very much, Jamie. And thank you very much, Christina. Thank you. No, you guys did.
It's an awesome job. It was really well done and.
Very, all very, very impressive. I wanna thank both of you very much. And there is a box and there is a little little stop. But thank you on behalf of all of us. Thank you for all of us. Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I think that's it for the regular scheduled program. Um, Will, do you have any uh, reports?
Morning commissioners, I just have one, one item to update um, the board on this morning. Um, in regard to the compensation study that we've been discussing now for, for a couple of months, finance has been working really hard on getting all the data entered, identifying um uh, any issues that may exist and having conversations with department heads regarding uh, positions and, and employees P A, so they're, we're making great progress. As I, as I mentioned, I believe last week in work session, we have a number of questions for uh, the consultant. Um, those have been presented to the consultant, but we have not been able to connect yet to discuss um, any, any solutions he may have to, to solving some of the concerns we have with the uh, compensation study. Um, if we can get uh, those answers from the, from the consultant and um there are no kind of remaining issues, I believe we can stay on track for implementing on June first, but I, we need to get those answers this week um, to, to make that realistic. Um, if we are unable to get some of those answers um, that we need, or the response provides more questions um, and raises more kind of issues that need to be addressed. Then we may need to push implementation back. Um, but in talking with finance, it sounds like we'll be able to stick with the June first kind of effective date, so we would make um, make any changes uh, retroactive to June first, even if technically we're not able to uh, have all the data and everything entered um, in time for the June thirtieth paycheck that would go out for the June first. Um, but finance is working really hard. Um, and, and we're trying to find a path forward to, to staying on track, but we just, we have some significant questions that need to be answered for, for us to feel confident in implementing um, for the June first pay period, so. Just wanted to give you uh, an update on that. Um, I really appreciate everything finance is doing to try and make it, make it happen. Um, but we still need some answers, uh, some key questions.
Perfect. Well, thank you guys for working so hard and hopefully you get here info, but if not, we, I, I, I don't know, I think we all totally understand that this is a process that we need to do right, and so don't, don't push it. I mean, push it, but don't, don't put yourselves in a pinch where we're gonna end up with a bad product. I'd rather have a little more time and get it done right than.
Yeah.
And I have every bit of confidence with Christina and Jamie, and you will.
Yeah.
So again, I, I mirror his comments. If we need to, we need it right, and so take the time you need to do it right.
Thank you, that's all I have, I have this morning.
Well, I've got a lot of other stuff, no? Okay.
We, we, we all want you to get out of here on time.
Got about a half hour conversation I'd like to have with.
So maybe talk now, my big support working here. I'm good.
Uh, just real quick, uh, Will and I have a meeting uh, on the seventeenth with uh, Governor Kotek to talk about biomass and uh, the issues, the water issues north of town. So I'm excited. We're gonna have to have an opportunity to have a conversation with her and the city and uh, hopefully try and move some of these things forward, so. Um, looking forward to that and.
Very good. And we had the listening session last Thursday at the library. Will was in attendance along with Oregon Health Authority and Oregon Department of Ag and our Public Health Department. I was a little disappointed by the turnout. But uh, the people got the information they needed, and there was a video, and so hopefully we can move forward from now.
Yep, I don't have anything.
Okay, great. Uh, wrap it up with that public comment?
Boy, you guys have been vocal today.
All right, uh, the Cook County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session under O R S one nine two six six zero two H for the purpose consulting with council concerning legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation. Or litigation likely to be filed in O R S one nine two six six zero two E for the purpose of conducting deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we return to open session. Return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room.
Okay.
Uh, Cook County Board of Commissioners will now leave executive session under O R S one nine two six six zero two eight, for the purpose consulting with council concerning legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation, or litigation likely to be filed in O R S one nine two six six zero two E for the purpose conducting deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room.
Commissioners, I think the uh, only motion is a motion to delegate authority to Commissioner Barney to sign the offer letters uh, and documents as discussed in the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of the items, I think, were just updated, so no action followed.
Anything else?
Oh, quick question.
Okay, quick question.
I'm just checking, go ahead.
I'm just wondering when the facilities guy is going. I'm just wondering when the facilities guy is going to.
He's twenty eight.
June twenty eight. Does he want any part time job for June twenty eighth so he can learn how to run the things at the Justice Center?
I can check in. I understand that time. What, what kind of schedule?
Whatever he, you know, I can give him some schedules of when they're having these trainings.
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to send that to me.
Okay.
Then I can, I can share it up.
I think Harold's right, though, is that he was tight on time of notice and leaving another job. It may maybe a problem for you, Brian.
It just does a reminder, our next regular board meeting is on it's two weeks from tomorrow, so it's on Thursday and then it's in the admin. We have Tuesday on the Thursday, the holiday. Keep in the meeting. People have that meeting that you're in business.
And the reason it isn't on Tuesday is because I get the delightful thing of driving in the county van to three, to see three Beaver Dams, which I have already probably seen enough Beavers in my life, but if any of you would like to join me on this public meeting of viewing of Beaver Dams, you are more than welcome.
Anything else? Turned.